All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll bring this meeting back to order. Sonia, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. First thing on our agenda now is approval of our agenda. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions.
So, in honor of Board Appreciation Month, and me on behalf of the entire student body, we had as many signatures as we could. Little poster just for everyone and appreciation of everything that you guys do. And just wanted to say thank you on behalf of everyone at the high school.
Thank you so much. I can't wait to read that. Any more recognitions? Bryce.
I'd just like to recognize Doug Scribner, Zach Beam, and Nicholas Peterson. Hosted the Northeast Regional Science Fair today. Had 24 kids participate, I believe. I don't have the official results tabulated for you yet. They have them tabulated, but I'll get those in an email to you. But just want to thank those guys for the hard work that they put in and all of the judges for taking time out of their day to come recognize the hard work that the kids have done. So, thank you.
Chair, I would like to recognize all of those that took place in the fundraising event for the Anderson family on Friday. It's always, it's always great to watch how the community comes together. But it was even more rewarding when people from Glen Rock were just, just totally amazed. Number one, about the empathy, the care and the support. And so, I know it's difficult times for them, but it was awfully nice to be, be part of the giving in.
It was my understanding there were over 90 items that were auctioned off. Does anyone know for sure? It was, I know it was a lot.
I see a nod in the crowd and I'm gonna say yes. And I believe somewhere around the $20,000 to $22,000 mark, I believe is what was, was right. Twenty-three.
That's incredible.
Math is not my strong suit either.
Anyone else? Recognitions? Tyler.
I'm chair. I think you guys are all aware of Mrs. McCormick's and Dr. Kogrove's trip to Washington DC last year when they won regionals. Anyway, they weren't satisfied with that, so now they're going down to Colorado for competitions. So, I would recognize Dr. Kogrove and Mrs. McCormick and a group of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. They took down to Colorado last weekend for the Brain Bowl. Found some stiff competition. This was good, but ended up 13th out of 22 schools competing down there. And this includes some, some private schools, some charter schools, some different things. So, we're proud of them. And then I'm past due on this one, but I needed to recognize our middle school, boys and girls wrestling teams. They were district champs last December and I don't think I ever got that to you guys, so.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else with recognitions?
I might also like to recognize Mrs. Scribner and FCC LA for providing a wonderful breakfast at the science fair. I'm not gonna say it was the best part of judging the contest, but it was definitely really, really fantastic. So, thank you to those people.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? Last call for recognitions. All right, we're gonna move on to visitors' comments. Paul's here. We're gonna... We're ready for this very small...
Yeah, how long do you want me to take? Oh, 15 minutes is that? I don't want to keep anybody long tonight or anything like that.
Whatever you think we need.
Okay, all right. All right, well, whatever, whatever you want. First of all, I was supposed to be here, I don't know, was it like December 12th or something like that? And things got canceled. And so, this has went, because we're gonna go, I think you should have probably got it emailed to you around the 8th or something like that of December. And then everything kinda got, the plug pulled on it and everything got canceled. So, I went ahead and, and I talked with Angie and Brad and we went ahead and transmitted to the state, which I was fine with on that. Cause you had a chance to look at it and we needed to get it to the state by December 15th on that. I could have, state would have understood, but we still wanted to get it to the state by December 15th. So, I have, so all this went to the state. I've got a lot of highlighted items in here that I just marked up for presentation purposes only on that to help you follow along. I want to thank Angie and Taylor and Grace. They just, I know it was kind of a transition year and they had kinda some unexpected things come up and things like that. But it, we made it through it and I want to just thank you for all your help with everything. Enjoyed working with her and all the staff on that. And so, just briefly, we'll start. You should have received a three-page item too. That's communication to governance. I don't know if it was in, it was two parts of the email. I just, this is primarily, this is just kinda goes through our services and things like that. Everybody find that? And I've, I've explained this in the past. I go through what we've audited. And they still have draft on them because that, this is what I emailed out to start with, so, on that. So, this is, that's where we're at. There wasn't, I had a couple typos in there, but I took care of those. And this really doesn't go to state. This is just between me and the board on this. Goes through my responsibilities as auditors, management's responsibilities for selection, use of appropriate accounting policies. No account, no new accounting policies were adopted during the year. There at the bottom of the page goes through accounting estimates. On the top of page two goes through disclosures. This is repeat from the past, net pension obligation, no difficulties in performing our audits. Corrected or uncorrected misstatements, we had none. Any disagreements with management, none. Management's representation that we've completed that. If you have any issues there, management consultant consultation with other independent accountants. If you have any disagreements with me, of course, you're entitled to a second opinion. Any findings, any, any, any items like that. You're entitled to a second opinion. There at the bottom of the page, other audit find, other matters, other audit, or excuse me, other audit findings or issues. Like this year, I get, this time of year, I get a lot of calls on W2s, things like that. Bookkeeping questions, things like that. This is just to inform the board that that communication takes place. It's normal course of our profession or of my business. And if there's something that I feel that needs to be brought to your attention is my responsibility to make that determination and inform the board on that. I'm gonna turn, I'm just gonna kinda go through it, just briefly go through. If you turn the, to the second, it says page two, page three on the bottom, but it's a table of contents. And I've color coded this a little bit to help out, cause there's a lot of things that go into this document. We have two parts. We have our compliance part of our audit. That's the yellow parts. That's our report on internal control and compliance over laws and regulations that we feel are material in preparing these financial statements. So, that's 47, 48. And then we have a similar type of report on 49 through 52 that's related specifically to only the federal funds. Okay, so, as you've expended over 750,000, I mean, it was close to, I think, 3 million or something like that this year. Way overdue to the ASR money. We have specific procedures that the federal government wants us to perform on the federal money. We have a hierarchy of what we test. We have flow charts that the federal government gives us to determine what we test. And then we also have resources on the federal government's website of what procedures they want performed on those programs, those specific programs. So, they have a specific audit program for myself for ASR, ASR Title I, Title II, Title III, special ad. They have resources where I'm required to actually go to the federal government's website and determine what procedures need to be performed on those grants. Okay? It's a big part of our audit. That's probably a lot of our time. Then in the blue, is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And that's just going to be, we're doing this work for the federal government now, cause you're over the $750,000 limit. I have to provide what grants, how much you spend of the federal government's money, so they can track it. This goes into the federal government's website. We enter it to a database. I have to go in and input it. Angie has to come back and approve it and it gets transmitted and accumulated into the federal government's database for all the programs. So, that's how the federal government tracks their money. The financial statements, those are the items kinda in the rose color. And I've reviewed this in the past, but there's three parts to the financial statements for the, for the school district. Number one down there that I highlighted in the back, I'm going upside down. But number one is a budget comparison. And that is, that's the budget to actual comparison. That's what Angie gives you every month. Okay? That is exactly identical to the budget reports that's provided to the school board. It's your budget and actual on that and on that. And then, so then we build upon that. The item two, the government fund financial statements, that's gonna track it by like the rec fund or the special revenue fund, the federal funds, the, the BOSI's fund, the general fund. So, it's gonna track, track the finance, track the spending. What did we have to spend? How did we, where did we derive it from? What's left to spend is gonna track it by those restrictions. So, it's gonna track it by revenue stream. So, the rec, the rec mail is a revenue stream. So, that money's dedicated to the recreation. The BOSI's money is dedicated to the BOSI's, because that's based upon a BOSI's tax. It's dedicated to the BOSI's fund. And the general funds, everything that's left over. And so, so that's going to be focusing on spending. Like I said, focusing on restrictions. What did we have to spend? Where was it derived from? What do we have left to spend? What did we spend it on? And then the, the third item is a government-wide financial statements. That's gonna be all resources of the district. That's gonna take into account the spendable resources, which were in number two, but the non-spendable resources, which is gonna be the buildings, the buses, the equipment, the land and so on, the others, every, all the assets of the district and all the liabilities of the district. And then, so just to, to, when, when I'm preparing these, I start with number one, and that is information that's provided to me by, by the district. I create number two based upon, I should, I shouldn't say I create. I assist in preparing number two based upon information that's provided to me, either through like the county treasurer or through resources that are here, or information that's here in the district. And then number three, the, then we do another conversion to get to the level of number three. And this is going to be information that's again, provided by, by the district based upon, my job is to take the information provided to me by the district, by the, by my retirement system, by the county treasurer and put them in the form of financial statements. Okay? On that, I don't, I don't make up, this is all based upon information that's given to me and I put it in the form of financial statements. That is my, my job essentially in preparing these. Okay? These are the district's financial statements. They're not mine. Okay? This need to be real clear about that. Okay? Any questions on any of that? My process on that? Okay, I'm gonna go through and just do, go through some highlights then. Okay? I'll move along here pretty quickly now, so. If you turn to page nine at the bottom, says page nine on the bottom.
Here was the swing voter. She's very powerful. What's your, you know, that you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job? And, and she's taking it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job and I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to sit between those two groups of men every meeting and be that person in the middle, which I, I think she might be in the middle all of the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and...
Says page nine on the bottom. And then I just highlighted, I've talked in the past about the retirement system and the liability. The retirement system's underfunded by about $2 billion. You take what, what their projected assets that they need to pay out versus what assets they actually have, what investments they actually have, they're about $2 billion short based upon their, those projections. And so, what happens is the district has to pick up a large, the district is required under accounting principles that they pick up their percentage share of that liability. So, so you get thrown in a pool with all the other school districts, all the other county governments, everything else. And that is your proportion based upon your contributions to the plan of the liability. And the reason I, I've covered that in the past, but the reason I highlighted that is that is about twice the number that it was last year. Cause that December 31st, 2021, the market was, that the measurement date, this December 31st, 22, the measurement data that the market was way down. So, the funded percentage had went down to almost 74%. So, it had dropped by 10%. So, there's a large liability there. Now, if you're gonna measure again, December 31st, 31, market was a record high. It's gonna be a lot less. That makes sense on, on that, on that liability? That's why I want to point out there. Page. Page seven. Excuse me, page. Page 12, sorry. Here, I just want to highlight the general fund. In the yellow, I put the prior year information. So, that's gonna be at June 30th, 2022. Page seven, page 12, it's, yeah, I'm sorry. It's page seven here on the side and then I've got it numbered by PDF as page 12. Yeah, okay, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. I got two page numbers in there. Usually it helps when it's on the screen, but it confuses everybody when it's not. Just where we're at last year, as you can see, the cash was down a little bit. The property tax receivable is up significantly. And then it's, I think I talked last year a little bit about the change in the collection of that Valorm tax or the mineral production taxes. It's kinda caused, I don't know how you even do a budget anymore with, with, cause you don't know what the, what the mineral, what your property taxes are gonna be with how this, how that's being collected at the state level at this point in time. It has been increasing, but you just don't know what you're gonna get until it gets paid by the, by the energy companies coming through. So, that's, I wanted to point those two things out there. Then on page, page nine. It says page 14, but it's got page 14 on the short side, page nine on the long side. Again, I put the 2021, 2022 information there in the yellow. As you can see, the property taxes were up almost 800,000 on 3.7 million. So, they were up almost 20%. Of course, when that happens though, then the foundation payment goes down to balance that out, goes down from 8.9 million dollars down to 7.139. Then I highlighted the expenses, expenditures going down. You can see real, real similar in expenses. Expenses were up 13.3 million. Prior year was 12.8 million dollars on that. So, just wanted, last year was a profit of 867,000 there on the general fund. And this year, the general fund was down 723,000. Third line from the bottom. The other I, I, line item that I, the other highlights I got there, the blue, the blue, and that's the federal grant funds. Talk about those in just a little bit, but that's, a lot of that is ASR money that's gonna run out now. I don't know how much was left at the end of the year, but it should be pretty much gone through. But maybe there's some carrying over into this year yet too. But that's why the federal grant money is so large, just due to the ASR and I'll cover that here in just a second. Then I'm gonna turn back to page 57, 45, and then it says page 57 at the bottom. And this I referred to before. This is schedule of expenditures of the federal awards. So, the, the grant, so like you can see there, the first item is their US Department of Agriculture Child Nutrition Cluster. This is gonna be lunch reimbursements. The, the federal CFDA number, that's the federal tracking number for that. That's how the federal government identifies their number and then the state number. And then I highlighted the ASR money down at the, the bottom. So, your total federal, federal awards that you receive were right about 4 million, 3.95 million, of which 2.4 million of it was the ASR. You know, and, and once that's gone, it'll return to normal with the Title I and the special ad and so on, which will run, those always run pretty consistent. But that ASR, all the ASR, it's been going on for what, three, four years now? The ASR and cares. So, that will eventually all go away. Okay, and then the last item I want to talk about, talking about our report on internal control and compliance. And I debated about doing, about putting this in, cause I kinda feel like the state kinda hung you out to dry on this. This relates back to the ASR. The ASR guidance was not real good. Let's just put it mildly on some of this stuff. And then they kinda threw this in. Davis Bacon there on the bottom of 54, page 66 is a federal requirement where when you do construction contracts or, or things like this, that you're hiring somebody that's employing laborers, could be electricians, it could be carpenters or things like this. The recipient needs to monitor or have the contractor report to them that the wages that they're paying to ensure that the contractor, that the audity is employed pays wages at the federal rate. So, the federal government goes through and goes by area, goes by state or whatever and rates like electrician's wage should be $25 an hour. Okay? And so, the, the federal government kinda threw this into the Davis Bacon. I don't think the state, it's a requirement that then the employer, the contractor give you certified payroll reports back to the audity that this is what, what we're paying our, our, our labor or our employees at to ensure, I mean, the, to ensure that the federal government's paying, that the contractor's paying the federal applicable wage rates for, for that, for this area. And the, I don't know, the state didn't do a very good job of letting, letting anybody know the requirements on that. There was a lot of turnover at the state level in the ASR funds. And then Taylor's going back and, and the state's asked her to go back and contact, contact those contractors to have them provide the reports back. Does that make sense? I don't know. I don't know if I explained that very well, but... But that's kinda what I wanted to cover tonight. Taylor put the response, audity response in there. I think she did a good job with that, explaining the situation. And like I said, I felt bad about putting that in there, cause I, like I said, I think some of the district kinda got hung out to dry on that, so.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone have any questions? No?
Hey, thanks for your time. I appreciate it, so.
Great job, thank you.
Okay.
And good job Angie and everyone else who helped. All right, I am gonna take the privilege of the chair for just a moment and say that the officers discussed this and we have decided that we think anyone who wants to come speak to this board is welcome to do so. When you come to a meeting, we will ask that you do limit your comments to five to 10 minutes. If it's longer than that, please contact the office and we will let you be placed on the agenda to speak to this board. Because our agendas are often very limited in scope, your topic does not have to be on the agenda. We want to hear from people and it's always better when the entire board hears what someone has to say, where people don't have to feel they just need to call one or two board members. So, that's what we're gonna do with that. We're gonna move on now to action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Old business revisions to policy GBCA, conflict of interest. Mr. Superintendent?
I would probably defer to Allison if she wanted to. And if she doesn't. I would just simply recommend the revisions to the policy that are in your packet. And then Allison, if you would like to comment, please feel free. Allison, Nick?
I'm here, yeah. Sorry, I was waiting for a referral from the chair.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. You're fine. I don't have any specific comments, but I'm happy to address any concerns or questions.
Being none, thank you Allison for being here. I would entertain a motion. Being none, thank you, Allison, for being here. Um, I would entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to policy GBCA staff conflict of interest. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carry. New business superintendent's contract. It's been moved and seconded for the board to approve extending the superintendent's contract for another year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Second quarter financial report, Angie.
Thank you, we go carry. Do you have a second financial report or do you?
We do.
October to December. It starts at January twenty eighth, December thirty first.
There's something.
Celo's phone.
Please. Try a different one. Can, can everyone on Zoom hear her?
It sounds very digitally.
Okay, we'll switch mics and try it again.
It sounds very digitally.
Okay, we'll switch mics and try it again.
Okay, let's try it again. Does that sound better?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, it's for the report period of October to December. And the cash summary is the cash on hand is of December thirty first. Um, the revenues from the foundation payments and then the treasurer's tax payments. Um, as far as expenditures, um, maintenance is, you know, have different projects going on and maintaining buildings and grounds. Food service, um, we haven't had to put any um, dollars into the food service account from the general fund as of yet. I know with different um, reports from the like the cooperative or the lunch fund, you know, prices are higher and product can be difficult to obtain, but we're getting by. So the rec district um, is from the one mill, it's the quarter of the pool utilities, the pool wages and the community uh, recreation director wages. Um, E W C B O Cs is the revenue from the half mill and then it includes the expenses for concurrent and dual enrollment classes and a portion of Kim's wages. Major maintenance fund is um, interest income and the payments from S F C. And they're based on the facilities plan. Um, the board, um, you'll notice some of the money from the board covered the cost of the beef processing minus the five hundred dollar um, donation we received. And then we also received the um, school protein enhancement project grant of two thousand sixty six dollars, which I will be applying for, or we applied for it, but to apply to get the reimbursement. We're doing that. Um, just there was three staff that um, so December, we paid out twelve thousand dollars to um, between three staff. It was a four thousand dollar national board certification money. And we will get a hundred percent reimbursed for that. I have those, that sent in, so. Other than that, if there's any questions.
Does anyone? It's been moved and seconded to approve the second quarter financial report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carry. Up next is a recommendation to the board to approve the financial audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
And I would make that recommendation to the board.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carry. Classified resignation.
I would recommend the resignation of Eva Francis as a kitchen assistant and permission to post the position.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Eva Francis as a kitchen assistant and to post the position. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carry. Classified resignation.
I recommend to the board the resignation of Todd Olson as a high school paraprofessional, which will be effective at the end of this calendar year in that we allowed some time to evaluate the need of that position for the next school year.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Todd Olson as a high school para effective, the end of his calendar year.
I would, I think, I think it reads the end of the school year.
Correct.
Is that what it's supposed to be? School year? Yeah, because you, okay, I saw.
School calendar, sorry.
So ended the school calendar year. Okay.
It is right there.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carry. Reinstatement of classified employee.
Yes, it would be my recommendation, Madam Chair, that we not reinstate the classified employee.
Is there a motion? For this recommendation?
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded that the board not reinstate a classified employee. I believe we have to ask, yes, Jason.
Madam Chair, is this a, is this one I'm abstaining from?
I believe so.
Okay, then I'll abstain.
Jason is abstaining from this vote. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Nay. Motion carry. Directors and superintendents reports. Who wants to go first? Tyler does.
We made it. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a report. I just have an invitation. On February thirteenth, it's a Tuesday. If you'd like to come, the high school's going to be on a modified schedule that day. Uh, Maggie Untersir and Zach Beam have been heading a committee for a career and fair trade day. Um, we're hoping to be able to connect some kids with some entities in the community that can give them a clear path to maybe some career options and choices and try to connect their learning that they're doing now to a future career pathway. Um, there's sixty two tables right now of different people coming in. So they've done a lot of work contacting individuals, so it should be a pretty big event. It's going to be the first, you know, rodeo, so we'll see how, how it goes. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of learning for, for next year, but they're doing a great job. And so just want to invite you to come to that on the thirteenth, if you would like.
Um, is that all day? What hours?
All day.
Thank you. And good job on them doing all that work. Jason.
They plan on doing this an annual thing then?
I would imagine. Um, I think this year's is going to be a lot of learning. Like, we're going to assess how we, how we do with things and then go from there. But it's something that we feel is important as a staff is, there's a lot of kids that I feel like are disconnected with the end goal of learning and getting their high school diploma and why is this class important that I take if I want to become an electrician? And why is this class important? Um, if I want to go to a four-year college? And so just trying to connect people in our community that have these careers with the kids, um, so that they can see that end goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do not have anything tonight myself, but I do have um, Erin with me so that she can talk a little bit about um, the K three literacy plan that we had to submit to the state. So I will defer to her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, okay, so this is the bill that we just keep talking about. So it baited off the governor's desk, it was signed in. Um, the last time I was here, we talked about the, really the student side of it and the parent communication, that parents are notified if their students, if their child's receiving um, special help in reading, um, through our individual reading plan. We talked about all that. Well, this is the other side of it. And um, we were tasked with developing a reading plan specifically for K three educators. So on the first page that I sent you, those are the standards, kind of like our students have standards. They have outlined standards that our professional development for K three reading have to meet, making sure that we're not just doing something that might not have that evidence behind it, that it really is worth our teacher's time and worth the time of our students, um, and bettering us as educators. So that first page is those standards that, um, as we're developing some of this, we have, we're tasked with meeting those standards. So um, I included those so that, kind of for me too, so that as we're developing professional development going forward, we're addressing those different strands. And then the other page, um, the state has broken this down into three roles. So the first role that you see um, described there are people that are not providing that tier one direct instruction. So our paraprofessionals, um, any of our uh, specials teachers might fall into there, people that are not directly teaching reading. And the requirement is three and a half hours for that one. Um, the standards stay the same throughout those, so that's kind of interesting. We just have to do it a lot quicker. Um, some of the assessment, I think, is a little less. Role two are educators like our classroom teachers that are providing that tier one direct instruction. And then role three are interventionists and sped teachers. So um, both roles two and three ended up having the same number of hours that we'll have to submit. This initial one, as you can see on the top of it, um, goes back to twenty twenty two, so it's retroactive, but we knew it was coming. So we did what we needed to do to make sure our people are all covered. So we have the documentation. Um, I just outlined some ways that we are meeting those standards. And that's what I was asked to do to the state, to provide to them. So we do have some customized training that we have to show meets these standards. Then we do some of our program specific training and then we're also doing a book study that brings all of the staff together so that they can have um, collaborative conversations around a common topic. And this year they um, asked for comprehension, so we're talking about building background knowledge and comprehension. So that's kind of this last part of this bill. This is the first three years, the next three years, the power requirements are the same, but we can tailor it to meet the needs of what our staff feels like. They want more professional development in, and we'll do that. Yeah. What questions do you have?
Does anyone have any questions for Erin? I do, I, I, it's uh, my understanding that uh, this district is still a leader in this arena and so um, I just want to say thank you for that. I know it takes a lot of work to do that and and then helping others uh, get there too is an additional burden, but um, I'm really glad you guys can do that too. Thank you. Thank you. Brandy? Okay. Casey? Nothing else? Thanks again for the great poster. Brad?
Madam Chair, one of the things that I will try to get out to the board, um, as we go into the legislative session is the actual link so that you can watch um, the individual bill progress um, on a day-to-day um, I guess overview uh, originally, or I guess this morning. Um, Angie helped me find it because it took me forever. Um, but if you do go to the school board site under the legislative link, it's under the twenty twenty four um, shortcut piece, but you'll see um, not that they're in a priority or anything of that, in fact, they're numerical right now. But it'll talk about where uh, and what bills are actually going to be discussed. Um, I would say probably the underestimating one right now, or at least locally, is going to be the, the property tax issue. Um, that's a hot one and, and, and you know, truly you can wear both sides of that as a, as a landowner, homeowner. Everyone would like less, but knowing that if there's less monies in the coffers, then truly that, that mill levy issue will, will put more money constraints on, on what you know, schools can do, what cities can do, what counties can do, and on and on. So um, I will try to get that out to you by week's end. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brad. Any board reports? Jason?
Not really a reporter, but just uh.
Turn your mic on, please.
Not necessarily a report, but just a reminder, and I think we've utilized it, our district has utilized it in the past. Um, let me see if I can find it again. It's not yet. Um, for the B O Cs, the for the co-op, um, utilizing the co-op to assist in, in some funding mod, uh, modules. The, I believe, uh, I've, I had it, um, Platt County, I think through co-op, they're going to start doing a virtual, some virtual stuff, um, some programs and things like that. So um, I had it up, I'll get it to Celo and get it printed out and it, it spells in there what, what that county or that district's going to do. So I know we were talking about it in the past. Um, so maybe that might be a, get ahold of Anita and, and see what uh, what they can do, but I'll get that printed out and get that out to you guys.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, news LJ dot com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to news LJ dot com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Um, so maybe that might be a, get ahold of Anita and, and see what uh, what they can do, but I'll get that printed out and get that out to you guys.
Thank you, Jason. Dana? Dana?
EWC BOCs met, lasted about ten minutes, approved the financial statement and adjourned. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have the board report? Uh, Wept will be meeting in a couple of weeks in Cheyenne. So, um, I'll probably go down a day early so I can visit with some legislators as well.
So at that meeting, then will we receive what they are projecting for a rate increase for the upcoming?
We will be determining the rate increase and each district will get their notice after that date, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is, um, and I talked with some of the board members about this in November. I would like to start highlighting some of our staff, um, on social media. Um, I don't know if some of you have seen, um, for example, Dixon Brothers, uh, highlights a member of their staff, talks a little about their job, what their hobbies are, why they're here. Um, so I will be, uh, going around and asking for a few volunteers to do that and just to get our community. Uh, I think there are a lot of you that the community doesn't know exactly where your job is. So, um, I think that would be a really fun way to do that. Um, no pressure, but, um, I will be coming around with a sign-up sheet to all the various places asking for a few volunteers. Um, it'll probably only be one or two a month, um, and we'll see how that goes, so. When you see me, please don't run. Okay. Uh, future agenda items. Paul?
I don't know if it would be appropriate to discuss as a board or just have a committee meeting, but I've had some individuals contact me about maybe doing some stuff long-term as far as when teachers retire to do with their sick days and how they're compensated for that. So I don't know if we, as a committee, should meet to discuss it and then bring it to the board, or if that's something that the board would like to discuss and just, I, I don't have all the information. I don't feel comfortable because it's something I just haven't looked at. So I would, I would like to talk to somebody who could at least fill us in and maybe have a discussion about what maybe we could do.
I would think of the committee meeting about that and then bringing it to the board would be, um, I feel.
I think in the past, what we've tried to do is we've tried to save those for that, so that would be a budgetary item. So when Angie gets ready with budgeting and we do budgeting, planning, and we look at, you know, what, what are the benefits, what, what are the benefit increases? Um, we usually ask staff at that time if there's ideas, you know, that they have. Um, that could be one, um, you know, how we reimburse unused days? Is that what the question was?
Sick days.
Okay. And I think we just addressed that. Well, help me for those on the committee, I think that was, was that last year's topic or the year before when we, we, we addressed that, but, but yeah, we, we can address that as well. Um, and then also, um, at that time, um, when you talk about sick days, then that's also something that attaches itself to, you know, the, the sick leave or the donated leave that you can use for others as well. So, um, we've done it a variety of ways in thirty years. Um, but I, if, if Angie could at least see the proposal to see what the budgetary effects might be, um, that would be huge. Because we really don't know. We don't know what the new monies are gonna be. We don't know what the increases to the benefit package are. But we do know that in every stretch of our programming, um, I really believe what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to do more with less. So, you know, instead of ten custodians, can you go with eight and, you know, add that extra money to those that are, that are gonna have to pick up the slack? Um, I don't know of a single area, when you look at, um, the areas represented, either certified or classified, where we would call it a, a healthy applicant pool compared to where we were ten years ago, five years ago. Um, and I think you all are aware that most of the school boards, you know, right now are, are fighting hugely over, you know, at least a, a regional cost of living adjustment. Um, and again, that would be new money. Um, but if property taxes go down and da, 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 um, there's only so much of the pie that can go around. So everyone is gonna be jockeying for, for money to take care of people. And I think money's important, um, but I also think that there's a lot of other variables that go into, you know, healthy work environments, um, able to recruit and retain as well. So, but no, any of those things, um, generally, we've always run through the budget committee, but if you would rather use, I can't read the committee.
It's, uh, you, I, and Dana is the benefits committee.
Yeah, and I would just say as long as, you know, I would let, make sure Angie's there so she's aware of the implications that could affect the budget.
Well, and, and my suggestion would be that, that, um, the committee could meet, learn about it. We can inform the board, uh, about everything that, that we have now and, and what might be some possible changes. But then, uh, wait to make a change until a possible change until we're actually doing the budget.
If I could, Madam Chair, it was just a question that I didn't have an answer to, and I thought that I would ask everybody so that I didn't pester the wrong person. So now guess what? I know it's you, so, you know.
Would you rather do that?
I guess as a committee, if we would like to discuss it, or if, if Angie, if you feel, you know, we could just, I just, I don't have answers to questions that I was asked, so I just thought it was something I would bring up and quiz the group, so.
There, there is a policy right now that, for that, so we can, I can get that, look at that and give you some answers anyways.
Do you want to, um, just give us a few minutes on that at the next meeting?
Sure.
And we'll just put that on future agenda?
I can do that.
Which is where we are.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for future agenda? All right, on to discussion items, board policy, GBED tobacco-free schools, staff no smoking, and GBEDR, tobacco-free schools, staff no smoking regulations. Mr. Jenkins?
So I don't know on at the very end after number seven.
Number seven, uh, just below that, that whole paragraph, it kind of outlines the items. Um, and I guess, uh, it does talk about, um, derived from, but I don't see nicotine patches as part of, part of that. I don't know, in, in, the way it's worded, it may be spelled out, but I was a wrestler, so word problems are hard, so. Um, I, I don't know if just the way it's written, if that kind of spells out the nicotine patch, um, as part of that. And then also, if you look, the second line from the bottom where it says cigars, pipes, other devices intended, you have that and then, um, but if you go up to the previous, the previous one, it has the same thing, but it's
Previous what?
The previous, uh,
Sentence?
Section, yep.
Okay.
It essentially, they're the exact same thing, but it's, this one on there has devised versus device. So that just needs to be a correction on that. Yeah, next page, yeah.
Next page up?
Yeah.
Next.
Yeah, under the staff, uh, patron, uh, and visitors.
Right, okay, so the first policy, GBED, gotcha.
Yeah, so essentially, they're, they're the exact same, but there's a little bit of verbiage difference, but that has devised, so just a correction on that. If that, if that was intention.
Since it says in, uh, including but not limited to?
Well, and that, and that
Do you feel like that covers it, or do you think it would be better to?
I mean, I'll leave that up to the powers that be. Just when I was reading that, I, it just, I just, in my mind, thought, well, shoot nicotine patches. But then discussing it with the wife and she, she read it a little different than I did, and she thought it was covered under that. So I just said, well, I'll just bring it up, and if it's good, I'm good with it too, but, so I just, I just wanted to bring that up.
I'm fine with listing that, I guess we, nicotine patches or gum? Those would be the other two, but that we probably don't have listed. Okay. CLO says, Tina?
So I have a question about that, um, because those, I mean, I, I get what, what we're doing here, and I get what we're talking about. But it seems like those are cessation types of measures. And so I'm not sure if it's fair to say to an adult that they can't have a nicotine patch on when they're trying to quit smoking? And that's one of the things that they're using to do that. I, it's just a question, not a, I don't have a thing either way, but.
And, and I, I agree with you, especially if, uh, we're talking about people who are just visiting the schools too. That someone who's trying to quit that, I would not want to interfere with them.
Right, but as a student, I can slap on a patch and say, oh, you're not covered. If you're, you know what I'm saying? Well, and that's what I'm saying, depending on how you, how, how the verbiage is on that, when it comes to that derived from.
And it does say that kids nicotine.
Madam Chair?
Paul?
Did I miss something? I thought we covered that you have to be twenty-one now to purchase tobacco products. So we, I don't think, unless I missed something, that we have any students that are twenty-one that could legally purchase tobacco products to either wear, chew, or use in the school, right? So the verbiage, this, this verbiage would cover basically everything, and the students wouldn't have a get out of jail free card because legally they can't purchase it or own it, correct?
Allison?
What I'm sitting here wondering is if you have a separate policy for students?
Um, okay, G, G, B, E, D covers students, and then this, this particular, uh, section he's talking about is for staff, patrons, and visitors. And then this, this particular, uh, section he's talking about is for staff, patrons, and visitors.
Okay. Well, it says J I C G for tobacco used by students.
I'm pulling up the website and trying to get to the policies.
Yeah, it does reference, um, the three other tobacco-free schools, tobacco used by students, and public conduct on student, on school property.
So it's, I mean, my thought was that this was intended towards, um, visitors and staff more than students?
That section is yes. So
I think it's a great question about the tobacco cessation products. Uh, I I don't know the answer offhand as to what federally is considered, whether they exempt those or not, I can look into it.
The school does offer sensation programs, right, for its staff?
Um, and I mean, I believe we have students and staff, patrons, and visitors separated pretty clearly here.
Well, and the, it, the language of this policy says use of tobacco products. I'm not sure that nicotine. I mean, the, the interesting thing is, is the, the variety of these products has changed so much over time, right? Um,
Right, well, the student one does um, but on GBED, staff, patrons, and visitors specifically calls out nicotine. Um, under students, it does not, so, so they really are not aligned. Is what I think.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense when you're looking at visitors and staff to exclude tobacco products. And, and I do think that it makes sense to allow for, uh, cessation products. Uh, if you want me to tell you what the federal law says on that, I'll have to dig in a little more.
Right, I would say we probably need to know that.
Yeah.
And then, um, thank you. And then I have a, just a friendly on, um, GBED, the first paragraph, the policy says on August thirtieth, two thousand and four, the use of tobacco products is prohibited. Later on, it says, starting, or as of, but the first paragraph makes it sound like there's just one day, so that should be as of or beginning, or that's all, just a friendly clarification there. So if Allison gets us aligned on these, does anyone have any other questions or issues? You'd like her to look at, Brad?
Madam Chair, and probably for Allison, there is a case where you would have, um, maybe the terminology be a problem, and that would be where we have adults that come to take classes, you know, at, at the E in the evening or through EWC, which we've always sort of argued, are they students, are they not students? Um, some of them definitely would exceed that age limit of twenty-one. So maybe as rapid as, as these things change, if you could look at both of those and then provide us some guidance at either the, the next board meeting or soon after that, so we can get
So use of the facilities by third parties unrelated to school activities, but in the school facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Tyler?
Just noticing you have some cross-reference policies down there too, so you might have to dive in now at once.
Yeah, the referenced ones, it's, it looks like there's probably about five. Yep, we need an expert weaver.
No, you're right, Tina, and that's why I said, you know, tho, some of those can be over the counter, so you're, they're not covered by the, prescribed by the doctors. So I just want to make sure that if we have, you know, heaven forbid, something happened and a teacher gets going.
Okay, thank you. Then we will just look at that again as soon as Allison has it. Thank you, CLO. Does anyone have anything else to come before this board? I will remind you that, oh, Brad?
Sorry, but something, if the board could give some consideration on our discussion items, is if you would like to continue the recognition banquet that usually happens at the end of the year. Um, there's never a good time for the recognition banquet towards the end of the year. Um, but if we're going to stay with that, we probably need to really start looking at a venue and on a time and a date, because you will run into everything under the sun always is in May. Um, no one likes to go to one after the school year, and you don't want it on the same evening as prom, and there you have everything in between. I'm trying to think, last year, we, I don't even remember. I think we fed about a hundred and eighty people last year, give or take. Um, it varies. It really does have a lot to do with weather. Um, it varies. It really does have a lot to do with weather, and what other events that people have to try to, to work around. And like I said, it's, there's, there, I would say it's almost impossible to find a date that it's not in conflict with something. So if you give that some thought, and then I will put it on the agenda for next time, and then, um, if the board would like to continue that venue, I'll visit with the leadership team as well and, and see if they have any ideas or suggestions as, as we move forward. That's usually where we do all the years of service pins, you know, as we were talking about highlighting people. Um, that's also another venue that we could do that by, you know, maybe some certi- certifications, um, awards. Uh, I mean, it, it's, it's really not my venue, but it, it's been the venue that the board has traditionally used to sort of celebrate, um, the end of a school year.
All right, we'll look forward to having some more information. Um, February twenty-fourth at the lodge, eight thirty to four is gonna be training.
We could, let's, let's look at maybe, let's start at eleven with lunch.
Okay.
And then we'll go more like that, maybe eleven thirty to five, five thirty. I think is, is what I heard today from.
I was gonna say, I think there's a change, but, uh, February twenty-fourth.
And we have reserved a room at the lodge, yep.
Okay, and then for some folks, our next board meeting is February fourteenth at seven PM. Seven PM, write that down.
Gotcha.
Um, and apologize to Valentine for not staying home with them. So, that being said, this board meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, I'll call the Eastern Western County Recreation Board. Meeting the order, um, you have an agenda in front of you, do I have a motion for?
Motion approved.
Hey, I see, uh, motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Uh, see none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. All right, agenda's approved. Recognitions. All right, uh, see none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. Is there any visitors' comments? See none, action items, uh, you got a consent agenda in front.
Approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. Got a all right. I, I've been moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, I screwed it up.
Motion in a second, um, all those in fa- favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Consent agenda's passed, um, I see no old business, um, any discussion for old business? Um, there's no new business. Um, anything for future, for our information?
Hold on, security, um, get a grant for two dummies for.
Oh, wow.
There are three ones over here.
Have we received anything from the complex retreat for summer? Nothing in writing yet. Okay, thank you.
How's the, how's the ramp working?
Great. And he loves it, and one person can put it in.
Oh, sorry, one person can put it in, so it's been great, um. I think it was a good investment. They like it better than the chair.
Okay, good.
Any other discussion items? See none, meeting adjourned.